of any absent member of the governing board.
Mayor President Hernandez.
Here.
Commissioner Desarwajardo.
Present.
Commissioner Bobby Carrillo.
Here.
Commissioner Ramiro Caballero.
Present.
Commissioner Daniel Chavez.
Here.
Commissioner Ricardo Medina.
Present.
And Commissioner Icha Flores.
Present. Thank you.
Thank you, Hilda. Everybody's here for board's great. Item one B pledge allegiance and invocation by Luis.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let us pray. God, as we pause in this hour of the day, we ask your pardon for any way that we have failed you today. We dedicate this day to you and we pray for humility, kindness, temperance, charity, diligence, and patience. Help us, God, to listen to your gentle voice and to trust in your guidance and grace. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Luis. Moving on to item two, public testimony. Hilda, anybody sign up? None. On to item three, public hearings. None also. Thank you very much. Item number four, city manager's report. Yes, mayor commissioners, I have a couple of reports for you today. One submission of sales tax collection report for March 2022. Again, good positive growth. We're up eighteen point six percent month over month from last month, which is great. The more important number is fourteen point four percent more than last year, so that shows us our true growth, which is great. Item number B, four B submission of property tax collection report for February 2022. Yes, mayor commissioners, we are on track on our property tax collections of ninety point one four percent and we're up one point one eight percent from this time last year, so that's a positive growth also. Also, I have a couple of speakers that want to come up. Maricela, come up, chamber.
Hi, good afternoon. Marcela Vez, Far Chamber President. Good afternoon, City Commission Mayor. I want to introduce a few of the events that we have coming up for the community. If we can pull up the Hub Job Fair. We are hosting a job fair. It's called the Hub Job Fair alongside the Far Economic Development Corporation and Workforce Solutions. We will have over forty employers in attendance. The event is going to be open to the public, is for everybody in the community and across the region, and it's free of admission and no pre-registration is required. This event is going to be held on Wednesday, March twenty third, 2022, from nine in the morning to twelve thirty P M at the Pepe Salinas Recreation Center. And then I also want to invite everybody to attend the Holy Festival of Colors, the FAR Festival of Colors. It is a festival that will be having March twenty sixth, it's a Saturday. It's going to be held from two to four P M at Dr. William Long Elementary Park here in FAR. It is a Hindu festival. It is a festival that is honoring the welcoming of spring and the beginning of the spring season, and it's the first time that we'll be hosting it here in FAR, and so we invite the community to participate.
Great. Is there going to be a food or an event or?
Yes. Yes, we will have food, drinks. It is mainly just a festival to listen to music and to play around with colors, so we provide some powdered colors that you can throw around and, you know, it's just a good time to dance and welcome, welcome spring.
Well, we're excited. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Also, next is RMA. Get out of what's coming, do a quick presentation update on the projects.
Mayor and Commission came up here to representing the RMA today, but I've got some good news for you. We've finally awarded the three sixty five tollway project. The project was originally introduced in two thousand. We started work in 2010. We received our environmental clearance in 2014, and it's now come to fruition. We've awarded it to Polis Construction, which is the contractor that has the interchange project. The project was awarded in the amount of approximately two hundred and ninety five million dollars for twelve point two miles of controlled access highway, so it's going to look much like Interstate Two or Interstate sixty nine. It's going to have overpasses, underpasses, it's going to have on ramps, off ramps. The only difference is that this is going to be a toll facility. It is, it is going to start at the intersection of San Juan Road and Military Highway there with a direct connect to the FAR Port of Entry, and then it's going to traverse westward eventually and tie into the Anseldeus Bridge. So as part of our public outreach with our partners, our stakeholders, and our stakeholders, and I just have a few slides to.
I'm sorry. Can you make sure they put it up on the screens too?
Yeah.
The last word's worn up.
I don't know.
What's your timeframe?
So that is a, it's a forty two month project. The contractor has one thousand two hundred and sixty four days to complete the construction work, forty two months to build twelve point two miles. So up on your screen is the master plan. That's what we call the Hidal County Loop System. The portion that you see in yellow is the three sixty five tollway, so that's the first segment. The one you see in purple is what we call the International Bridge Trade Corridor Project. That actually provides the FAR Port of Entry with a direct connect to Interstate Two. What the section in white is State Highway sixty eight, which is currently in environmental clearance process, and then the remainder portions are in green are what we call Section A West and Section C, and that's the remainder of the Loop Project.
Is sixty eight funded?
Sixty eight is partially funded, Mayor. It's only funded from Interstate Two up to Monte Cristo. They've got, they've got, they're clearing it all the way up to four ninety and two eighty one, but my understanding is they only have construction dollars to build it up to Monte Cristo at this, at this point.
They need I B T C.
Yeah. And so basically, you know, these are some of the milestones, but our contractor is Polis, Polis Construction. Again, it's the two hundred and ninety five million dollar contract. We do have value engineering integrated into the, into the contract, into the project contract, and we've already realized a fifteen million dollar savings in the project, so we've actually reduced the cost to two hundred and eighty one million, and that's through innovation. The contractor has, has innovated on some of the elements of the project, and the authority has realized already a fifty million dollar savings post award, so. I think, and these are just some of the exhibits to the project. Basically, we've got a construction project. The notice to proceed was issued on February fifteenth, and the contractor started last week on March fifteenth, and so he's, he's, clock is ticking, and they've got to get to work, so.
Is this the first roadway you've built?
We, we, the authority built a small, approximately twenty three million dollar project at Military Highway and San Juan Road, which we call the Border Safety Inspection Facility. Yeah. So that was kind of the pilot project for us.
This is the first project.
Yeah, this is the inaugural project for us. This is, this is the first big project for the authority, so. Yes, sir. It was.
Congratulations, sir.
But I have, I have a question.
Yeah.
Right there as you're exiting our, our international bridge, I know we're going to start getting questions, and I know I'm starting getting phone calls from all the logistic people. What's that timeframe for that section to be developed and what are we looking, how's it going to hinder their crossings? Because that's going to be, I guess, impact us quite a bit.
Well, this roadway is all new location, so we're going on.
It's all north of Military Highway.
Okay.
Going west.
So it's all new right of way. There's no existing roadway, so we're not impacting.
It's actually going off of Military Highway.
It is, but we've already built the infrastructure at Military Highway that's already there.
Okay.
Remember the big pass. And then it goes north, south of the levees, going west, so it won't impact, shouldn't impact anybody.
Until they get towards past Jackson when that stuff gets.
But even then, even then, it's going to be minor inconveniences because we're going to be spanning over all, we're going to be spanning over Cage, over Jackson Road, over McCall, over Tenth Street, you know, over Second Street, over ten, over Twenty Third, over where, over, you know, Cherry, so it'll be very minor inconvenience to the motoring public because we're not going to really be disturbing any existing roadways.
Good, because they'll.
All new location.
Answer their question.
Yeah.
I know they're going to find out and everybody's going to go berserk over there.
Yes, sir.
And when will we start the project going north?
Um, I B T C?
Yeah.
So as a matter of fact, we're in the final stages, Commissioner, of the environmental clearance process. We had our public hearing last week, last Thursday on March seventeenth, so we anticipate receiving our finding of no significant impact by probably June. We're partially funded on the project. We've got approximately twelve point one million dollars allocated for right of way acquisition, so we'll start the right of way acquisition pretty quick because that segment is non-toll. It's going to be a free road, so we should be eligible for a lot of the funding opportunities through Texas or the state of Texas.
So the projected date to start?
That one is going to start at the end of this one. Three sixty five is supposed to be online by November twenty first, twenty twenty five, and we're hoping that I B T C will start construction as soon as three sixty five is wrapped up.
A long time.
Yes, a couple of years.
Why, why do they, what have to follow each other? I mean, they're totally separate projects.
They don't. I mean, that's just our best estimate right now because we don't have any funding, complete funding secured. So there's an opportunity to accelerate it.
Right, there is, because I mean, from a historical perspective, we've been involved with this three sixty five deal with President Dianda now, gosh, been going on.
Long time.
Four years, I think, and we finally, finally were able to get the difference in funding, which I'm glad you guys did. But don't forget, the reason we merged as an NPO, our number one project for the entire region was I B T C, the number one project. So as we go forward and you guys finish your environmental, that's when we're supposed to head to Austin and remind them, especially the governor, remember, we said we were going to merge, and the deal was that we get our infrastructure and we obviously wanted I B T C and the toll for Cameron County as the top two priority projects. So we anticipate getting the funding because it's on system, first of all, which means Texas dot can foot the bill. We don't have to pay for it, and it is the project the NPO has designated as to be number one for the region.
That is correct.
So category toll money should be able to flow from there no matter what the amount is because that is the agreement we have with Austin, so.
That is correct.
That's what I expect to happen, and I'm not going to be waiting around for you guys to finish three sixty five. It has nothing, in my mind, has nothing to do with it. But congratulations. I'm glad you, you guys finally, you got that done, and I know he keeps giving reports at the NPO. It's coming, it's coming.
Yep, it's here.
It's like the check in the mail. But I'm glad, I'm glad you guys are here.
It's here, Mayor, and I B T C, Mayor, is, ranks very, very high on the priorities because it is considered a project of national significance, because it connect, it connects an international port of entry to an interstate highway, and so it has a very, very high ranking.
Good. I have to call him. Mira? Just the guy we're looking for. Hey, man. You want to come to the mic real quick? Introduce yourself. Don't, don't, don't go away. Yeah. Two for one.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Andrew Cannon, Executive Director of the Rio Grande Valley NPO.
That's right. So we're just discussing the three sixty five project and how happy we are with the fact the RMA is building this great project, and I was just reminding him that one of the requirements for us merging for the NPO was there was two major priorities for the Rio Grande Valley. The first was I B T C and then the toll road for Cameron. So we're discussing funding, we're discussing timeline, and it was alluded to that we will wait for the three sixty five to be done, and I know one has nothing to do with the other. This other project's on system, and we should be able to go to category twelve funding, discretionary funding, because that's on system, first of all, and that is the agreement we have with the Texas Commission that we would have that B T C done when funds are available, and I know they're available. Absolutely. So we're going to move, so I just want to clarify, did I get, did I get that wrong?
No, you're absolutely right, and we visited with Chairman Buck on that very subject matter when he was down here when we had the dedication ceremony for the interchange.
That's right.
Following up on that with him and the newly appointed Executive Director Mark Williams.
Yes.
On that. So I have the same understanding as you is that one has nothing to do with the other on waiting until the project is complete before the other begins, so that's, that's at least in our office, the mindset that we're operating under.
That's the mindset as well. Just everybody knows in FAR, we've been very active, so we finally got the three sixty five. Now that I B T C will be coming on, I expect it to come a lot sooner than that timetable, and we should be get the funding because we need it for our traffic control, but also logistics and for safety. But it was just good timing that you came in because we were just discussing the NPO. Thank you for showing up, and thank you, gentlemen.
That's why I came in late. Hopefully you wouldn't have to talk.
Well, next time you could text.
Just one last item, Mayor, in closing, is that we'll be scheduling a groundbreaking, and of course, we'll be inviting all the elected officials to participate in that. The date is yet to be determined, but it should be in the next month or so.
Great. Okay. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have. City Manager Reports, excited, consent agenda. All items are routine and uncontroversial and can be enacted when motion, should you so choose.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Is Andrew here for something?
Andrew, are you here for a particular item?
Are you here for a particular item? Okay.
Just grace us with your presence. So now, Mayor, can we go to executive? I've got a couple of items for you.
In accordance with section five five one point zero seven one through five five one point zero eight seven of the Texas government code, the Fall Board of Commissioners hereby gives notice is committing into executive session to discuss the listed in the public portion of the meeting agenda. The time now is four fifteen. Time four thirty eight. We're back in open session.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Back in open session, back on the regular agenda, six A ordinances and resolutions, six A consideration action if any, and ordinance amending ordinance number oh, twenty nineteen dash thirty two, increase the members of FAR, keep FAR beautiful committee from five to seven members. This is the first reading.
No for approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Item six B consideration action if any, resolution appointing three new members, and reappointing five members to Community Development Council. Cindy, you got the list right. Come on up.
Hello, everyone. For the record, Cynthia Gadsadre is Director of External Relations. So this year, we have several seats that are now vacant. Actually, it's three seats, and then we have, we have five that are reappointed within our committee. So those that are going to be replaced, we have now Mr. Victor Alvarez from Census Track two thirteen, and then also from Census Track two thirteen, Carla Bertan, and then from Census Track two seventeen, Lisa Nunes. And just for the record, the way, the way this council works is there has to be representation from each census tract, and according to the population of each tract, there's two representatives per, per tract, and so within the eleven council members, all of their years are basically sporadic in terms of their reappointments. And in terms of those that are going to be reappointed, we have Olga Cardosa from Census Track two fourteen, Lucio Gaetan from Census Track two fourteen, Norma Trevino from Census Track two fifteen, Marco Gonzalez from Census Track two sixteen, and Danny Smith from Census Track two sixteen as well. Are there any questions?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Cindy. Item six C consideration action if any, resolution authorizing the issuance of FAR Economic Development Corporation Sales Tax Revenue Bonds, taxable series twenty twenty two, awarding sale of the bonds and containing other provisions related thereto. And our, our, David, our financial advisors here in the audience, and I hopefully has good news for us.
You got the little, that hook to get people off stage.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. I have a presentation here for you. I'm not going to spend too much time and go over all the details. I'm just going to hit the main points for you all.
Double sided, man. Safe paper, don't you?
Yeah, this was a, we priced this all morning and part of the afternoon. I had to rent these here at City Hall, actually, but with, with that said, as you know, we've been working on this project now for several months, and we, we entered the market this morning. As you all know, there's a lot of things going on in the economy with Russia, Ukraine, the price of oil, inflation. These are factors. The Federal Reserve has come out just in the last two, three months talking about how they're going to raise rates at least eight or nine times over the next two years. So we're definitely going into higher interest rate environment. With that being said, there was a lot of positive things in the market today. Your all's bonds were, were at least two, three times oversubscribed, meaning that you had a very favorable outlook in the market today, but you didn't have enough bonds for the amount of investors. People really wanted to buy your bonds today. So, so with that, I'm going to just jump over here to page number three. If you look at the, the chart on the top left, this just kind of gives you an idea of what's been happening to the interest rate environment. So this shows you the kind of the gold line where we were a year ago, the green line with the dots where we were a month ago, and then at the very top shows you where we currently are. So, so we have been going up with rates pretty quick. With that said, these bonds were rated, if you jump over to page number four, these bonds are rated A stable from Standard and Poor's, which is the major, the major rating agency. So this is the first time that the E D C has, has gone out in the open market, received a rating, bond insurance. So this is a very high rating, so congratulations to the city and the E D C on this first rating. Because of the bond insurance you purchased, when you actually sold the bonds, you didn't sell them at an A rating, you sold them at a double A rating, so that lowers the interest rate that you lock in into the market. If you jump over to page number six, here we have a summary. We have a project fund of forty seven million. We have a debt service reserve fund of three point nine million. The true interest cost on this over twenty five years is a four point three eight, and the total net debt over twenty five years is eighty point two. And then if you jump over to page number seven here, we just have a, a, a short picture of the sources and uses of funds. And on page number eight, and if you have any questions at any time, just, just let me know, whatever you may have on any of these slides, I'm happy, I'm happy to go over it again. If you jump over to page eight, this gives you an idea of what this looks like from a coverage level. So if you look in, in column two, we have your principal, column, or I'm sorry, column two, we have your current revenues, columns three and four, for these bonds, we have your principal and interest. What the rating agencies really, really look at, or what they really, really care about, if you jump over to columns seven and columns twelve, they want to see that the coverage levels are there, and in your all's case, they definitely are there. And if, if you look at the, the, the way that these documents work, you're at about one point two five times, which is pretty standard for any type of revenue credit, you're right in that frame of one point two five times. If there's not any questions on this one, on the next page, which would be page number nine, we have your financing timeline. This is just a calendar. This is to give you guys an update of how the timing is going to work. So today, we're here to price the bonds. We're here before the E D C and your city commission. If you all approve this, we will be working with your all's bond council, the Texas Attorney General's Office, so that we can close on this loan, and we will be working and, and, you know, all things being equal and everything working out just fine, as it usually does. If you go to the last line here, on April twenty first, on that day is when we will close, officially close on this loan, and that's when the money will be wired into the city's account, so y'all can begin to work on the projects. Again, this was, in, in the back, we have here kind of a detailed report from the rating agencies that gives you very detailed specifics about how the rating agencies kind of analyze the E D C from a credit standpoint, a financial standpoint, everything, growth. So there's that there for your reference. There's a couple of pages there, and then on the back, you also have the letter from, from the insurance company that guarantees insurance on the bonds for twenty five years. So with that, I know it's a lot of information kind of crammed into just a couple of slides, but I'm happy to answer anything you all have at this time.
What's prime interest rate right now?
The prime interest rate right now, I believe it's a, I'm not sure exactly the primary. I know the ten year is at about two point two three, which is kind of what we're going off for these bonds.
Two point what?
It was a two point three. So it was two point nine nine, basically, two point three was what it was this afternoon, and it was, it's, on Friday, it was a two point one five, so it went up fifteen basis points basically from Friday to Monday, and the, and then the Fed Chair came out at lunchtime talking about how he was going to, they were going to be more aggressive with rate hikes, and it went up a little bit and then came back down. So it was, it's just been a very volatile last couple of weeks due to the interest rate environment that we're seeing out there.
So if the interest rate goes up, what's going to happen to bond prices and what should happen?
If interest rates go up, usually, usually that means that the interest rate that you're going to be paying on bonds is going to be a lot more. So the value on bonds, actually, there's, there's kind of an inverse relation, so as the, as the yields go up, the prices go down, the value of those bonds lose yield. But basically, it just means going forward, any bonds sold in the future, you're going to pay a much higher interest rate than what we've been used to the last three years.
They're less attractive, better investments.
Right.
It's over twenty or twenty five years?
Twenty five, twenty five years, and you'll be able to refinance them in about ten years for savings.
All right.
But interest rates are supposed to go, what, go up seven times the next year?
Right, but they're locked, so all those terms are locked rates, yes.
Okay. We'll do good. I'm good. Thank you, sir. Anybody have any questions? Any action, is it an action item?
Sure, it is an action item.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
One quick question. Carla, do we need a record vote? Just a vote like this? Record vote? Okay.
Thank you.
Back on the agenda, seven A consideration action if any, authorizes a far place department to purchase two, twenty twenty two BMW R twelve fifty R T dash P police motorcycles from Malamo BMW in Bornie, Texas.
Bornie.
Bornie, Texas, for a total amount of fifty seven thousand, five forty six and eight cents. Yes, sir. PD Chief says that they are a big hit. Two more. Here we are.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Eight A consideration action if any, authorize city manager to amend contract with Garcia Infrastructure Consultants LLC for additional professional engineering services for the San Trac Stewart Collection Improvements and Lift Station one, one twenty nine and thirty three elimination project. Yes, Mayor Commissioners, this is a small part of the bigger project we have for those three lift stations. There's development coming in. This is where the new Starbucks and other developments coming in, the land next to Rudy's. Staff wants to pull that project out and read and do this portion by itself because by the time we get environmental clear and everything else from T W B to use their money, the development's going to be done. We have to go tear up concrete and everything else. So we want permission to go ahead and, and price it out, pull it out and see, make sure everything works right. Full, full disclosure, I'm not a hundred percent in agreement with it. I think the development should pay something in this because they're causing us to, to. Yeah, and this, this price is just for us to pull it out. We're still going to go back and renegotiate with the developer.
Where's the development?
Uh, Nolana, West Nolana, just next to the Rudy's barbecue. The lift station is now, that's where new Starbucks and what else is going in there rolling?
There's a development going up there too, right?
That's it. That's why we're doing this.
Development, there's some housing and stuff that's going to be there.
Uh, that's further, that's over there on Sugar by the ditch.
No, 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 right next to it.
Yeah, by, yeah, by the ditch, they hug the ditch.
Yeah.
But, yeah, it's a different one. So these are the three?
These are the three lift stations that it's part of one project that we submitted to Water Development Board.
Okay. No for approval.
Second.
But these lift stations are all on Nolana?
No, they're not all. They just lead, one leads to another. It's a domino effect. We have to fix one, we replace the other to take the disruption, or disruption flow.
Okay, so where, how does this work? What does the water flow? North, south, east, west?
Everything flows south, hits Nolana, goes east, and then goes south to the.
So which is the most northern one then?
Uh, I believe thirty three, where's the minute, was thirty three is the one on, on Nolana?
And then, what's the next one? It's one twenty nine and thirty three, and where's twenty nine? Okay. So I guess we don't know where one is either then.
Um, one should be by the plant, but so these lift stations are not, are not sequentially ordered. This one doesn't go this one. In the flow, it does, but in the numbering, it doesn't. So that's why station twenty five is the last one that did on the lander. That's the brand of lift station. Like, we're bypassing that one and going to the next one. But this is just, all the work's going to be at lift station thirty three.
This is just engineering services, right?
Yes.
No construction yet.
Not construction yet.
Because eventually they're going to eliminate them when you start doing the gravity going all the way through the major project.
Yes, but in order to.
That's a major project, right?
Yeah, because these new lines will be underneath driveways and concrete and everything else once the development gets there.
Okay. I don't have any more discussion. Anybody else? Otherwise, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Eight B consideration action if any, authorize city manager to amend agreement with G two architects in the amount of five hundred and forty thousand, three hundred and thirty four dollars for the EMS and Friday Department Headquarters. Yes, Mayor Commissioners, this is a new superstation that we're doing on North Raiders Drive by Station One. In the original concept, we did the superstation of police and. Of police and police and EMS station together. Uh, in the planning of this, it's come to light that we also need to do Station One, which we plan on doing. We hadn't engaged an architect for it. So we're adding Station One to it. We're adding the fireman's park to it. We're adding the volunteer barbecue house to it. And the hanger and helipad to move the, the helicopter there also. That's the additional services. I want to get it all done, packaged up that we've got funding somewhere.
Did you put the kids in sink too?
Yes, sir.
Alright.
There's actually three kids in sinks in that place.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Thank you. Eight C consideration action depending on amendment number two in the amount of thirteen thousand, thirty-two dollars and thirty-one cents. To the agreement with Millennium Engineer Group Inc. For additional construction material testing for fiscal year twenty fifteen donation acceptance program. Projects northbound lanes and second BAS exit. We're at the mercy of text out. We need additional testing to make sure the project goes through. Have recommended approval.
Vote for second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Thank you. Eight D consideration action depending on agreement with Pyro Shores of Texas for fireworks display. For July fourth, twenty twenty-two celebration, the amount of forty-two thousand, four hundred dollars. Yes, mayor commissioner, this is for the uh, two standard fireworks displays we have in the city. This is for the Fourth of July festival. Has recommended approval.
So. Last time we were out there, South Fire, I couldn't see anything.
We fixed that at the next one.
How, how did you get? Just everybody knows. What was the problem?
It was too low. That property is too low. So we raised it to street level. We did it on. Now, we did on Las Vegas Road, right? East Las Vegas Road. So it was fine for New Year's.
Yes.
Okay. So we had a motion? In a second? Yes. Okay. No further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Eight E consideration action, if any memorandum of understanding between Park Police Department and South Texas College. For instruction of the basic telecommunicator certification. Yes, mayor commissioners, uh, as you know, we have a high school. Telecommunication course that we feed into PSJ that feeds into our, our telecommunication department. Uh, this is going to take the next step and get them an actual certificate. Uh, we'll be using the T equals license of PD has to accomplish this. And I believe some of our, our supervisors are going to be some of the instructors for the class also.
Vote to approve. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, eight F consideration action depending on memorandum of understanding between Park Police Department. And San Juan Police Department for the use of San Juan Police Jail during the dates of April first to April fourth, twenty twenty-two. Uh, yes, mayor commissioners, the, the one that's in your packet has been revised as of this morning. Legal already reviewed it. We're good with it. Uh, the reason this is happening, if you remember last budget year, in the budget process, we budgeted for three buildings to come up to par for emergency services. Writing generators, those buildings. Uh, the generators have been produced, they've been delivered. A part of it having to rewire the entire buildings. So I gotta shut down the PD and the court for four days. Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and turn it back on Monday. So we're going to San Juan PD jail in case we need to pick up anybody and take them to jail. For reasonable reasons.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you. Uh, eight G consideration action, if any on memorandum of understanding between the city of far and Vanguard Academy. For teamfart.net services for their students. Yes, mayor commissioners, this was part of the pro forma we had for um. Our fart, teamfart.net internet, um, the schools to provide internet. Payment for the services to the students. So this uh, is the first part of that. We're going to follow up with this with an air local specific to each school.
Vote to approve. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Eight H consideration action depending on memorandum of understanding between city of far and the Dalgo Independent School District.
Oh, same.
For teamfart.net services, same concept. Uh, MOU and this one, we actually have a working draft of the interlocal that'll be on next meeting. Have recommended approval.
Vote to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Eight I consideration action, if any on memorandum of understanding between the city of far and idea public schools for teamfart.net services. Same concept.
Oh.
Vote for approval. Second.
Sorry. But nothing. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Eight J consideration action, if any on the award of contract for First Street Avenue paving improvements to the lowest responsible bidder. Castle Enterprises LLC in the amount of three hundred and fourteen thousand, seven hundred and seventeen dollars. And there is a typo. It's seventy cents, not seventeen. I guess mayor commissioners, these, this will give us another north, south um, lateral from the expressway. This will get us from the expressway all the way to four ninety-five. A new rule.
Great.
Vote to approve. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Eight K consideration action, if any authorized city manager to negotiate an entry into an interlocal agreement. Between the city of far and the city of mission for emergency ambulance, emergency medical services. Yes, mayor commissioners, uh, for the record, I want to make it clear that city mission did reach out last week. They want us to possibly take over their nine one one emergency ambulance services. So I'm waiting for numbers. If the numbers work, we'll go ahead and enter into. Have recommended approval.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
And before we go, I'm sorry, um, there was one more presentation we have. Udi, can we go back to um. Item number four, city manager's reports. Come on up, Udi.
Sorry, sorry. Um, as we know, we have Alex Cano and I'll let him take the stage because he wants to give a very special recognition to uh, BCE.
Hello, everybody. How y'all doing today?
Good. How are you?
Thank you, mayor, and thank you, Mr. Wiley and all the commissioners for having us here today. Uh, we are very blessed and, and honored to, to be uh, presented from the city afar that uh. Something that we have done, you know, um, nationally and, and, and our job is not done, but the fact that you guys took time to, to recognize us and give us a, a little bit of time, you know, uh, thank you. I want to just thank you from the bottom of my heart. Um, and also, you know, we're just very proud to represent the city. Uh, uh, city afar is just growing tremendously. So uh, I think uh, with the work of all of you, uh, working together, you make this possible. Uh, I wasn't able to get Amir, everyone here today, uh, due to the time and a lot of people travel from, they're from every, you know, different cities, but. Um, I was able to get a couple of kids here, so I don't know exactly who's here, but we have a, a little bit over, you know, a hundred and sixty girls that are in the team. But I was able to get some here today, so I apologize if I didn't come through with getting everybody here. Uh, I also teach for PSJ, so the traffic getting here, uh, you know, we were able to make it. But uh, at this time, I want to thank also Udi. Where's Udi? Udi, thank you so much for going out there to our business and once again, uh, putting this video together. And I hope uh, that we make you proud and not only that, but when they do present uh, Valley Cheerlead at the national level, uh, we do represent the city afar. So we're just, you know, extremely excited about not only that, but the fact that. One of the best gyms or for definitely the best gym in the valley, but one of the best gyms in the US, you know, that is located in the city afar, and we're just proud to, to represent you guys. So uh, we're going to show you guys a video and I hope you guys enjoy it. If you haven't seen it, and thank you once again for putting it together. Thank you, Mr. Wiley.
Also make sure you tell them what y'all accomplished.
So as you're watching the video, I'm just going to uh, talk about.
As we go.
They twisted, tumbled and cheered their way to the top.
It's their fourth title, so it makes it very special.
The Valley Cheer Elites Inferno Squad beat out fourteen hundred other teams. To claim the National Cheerleaders Association Division Two Coed Championship. Proudly putting the city afar on the map.
Winning the biggest competition uh, in the US, you know, NCA uh, has been a challenge for us and the fact that we went out there and competed and won. Uh, it's, it's a great accomplishment for us.
But don't let these agile athletes fool you. These stunts have.
Yeah, true. I think you can hear the video.
Also, our job is not done. We are going to the summit also uh, in May, and that is the worlds of the world. So. That one you get selected, only about thirty percent of the entire cheer industry gets to go. You have to earn a bit to go. And the fact that we are the only gym in the valley, and this is all facts, this is not made up and it's in the walls. Uh, we are the only gym with three summit titles, okay? If you do a little bit of research or my own present, I will be more than glad to debate with any other cheer coach here in the valley. But I gotta tell you, some of you guys know, I know the Carrillos, I've had your babies since they were little. When we opened up, I had Carolina, she was only five years old and that's when we got started. But um, our job is not done, so we're hoping to come back and represent the city of far. And like I said, they don't just put Valley Cheerlead, but they do put. Valley Cheerlead from, you know, from far Texas, let's, you know, Valley Cheerlead. So I don't know if the video will continue. No, it's okay. I was just, go ahead. So I hope you enjoy it.
Come on, Wiley. They twisted, tumbled and cheered their way to the top.
It's their fourth title, so it makes it very special.
The Valley Cheer Elites Inferno Squad beat out fourteen hundred other teams. To claim the National Cheerleaders Association Division Two Coed Championship. Proudly putting the city afar on the map.
Winning the biggest competition uh, in the US, you know, NCA uh, has been a challenge for us. And the fact that we went out there and competed and won, uh, it, it's, it's a great accomplishment for us.
But don't let these agile athletes fool you. These stunts have taken dedication, trial and error, and of course, hours and hours of practice to perfect every detail. For some, like Captain Kaylee Wilson, cheer has been a way of life.
Cheer has just been something that I've been so dedicated to. It's taught me to put my best foot forward and work as hard as I can to achieve big goals and win championships.
Another key ingredient in this recipe for success, those cheering on the team from the stands.
If it wasn't for our amazing parents that bring these athletes to practice, you know, um, this wouldn't be possible. But the fact that we have an amazing coaching staff, uh, I think that's what makes us different from other people.
We're a big family, so it's super exciting to watch them together, perform with their teammates and like I said, something they love to do.
The hard work, support from parents and staff, and performing at top notch level when it counts. All came together to make this a championship squad. But Coach Cano says BCE is far from done.
It's very special. It is something that we're going to carry and it's definitely going to set the bar for next year. And we're looking forward into coming with a, a, a title number five next year.
Now BCE has their hearts set on the top prize at the next competition in Orlando, Florida this May. Good luck BCE. McKenna, three, ready, one, two, three.
I want to thank Udi once again for putting this together. Uh, I do, uh, uh, thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. I do want to recognize a name in our gym. It's a very short story. I know we have to go, but can we stand here in the front? Uh, just think so. So uh, I, a real quick story, and I, I think it's important that we all know that some of the love, that what we love to do, it's very special. But we have a team named McKenna. Uh, McKenna, Avery McKenna passed away up six years ago and she was fundraising for, to go to Florida. And unfortunately during her fundraising, uh, she had a tragic accident and, and, you know, uh, really bad, really bad accident. So this year, her parents were still real good friends with them. Um, and we got a uniform made in her name, so we spread the love through, you know, we still keep her alive, her name alive. But I, I just think uh, you should know the story that McKenna was one of our athletes. And then this year, our level five team. Um, we did get some sponsors. I think this is a beauty part of it, that when we came up with this uniform. Uh, everyone got a spot, they sponsored an athlete, so they had to tell the story behind uh, what McKenna, who McKenna is. And uh, I just wanted to, uh, share that story with me, you know, uh, her anniversary is coming up and her birthday is on Wednesday, so. Thank you for allowing me to say a little bit about McKenna, but she's very special to us. Thank you, baby.
Yeah.
Thank you, Alex. And before everybody leaves, of course, um, the city of far is really proud and we have a gift for everyone. And those that didn't make it can always come back and get one. So congratulations on behalf of the city of far, commissioners, mayor, everyone involved. Uh, for really putting the city of far in the map and, and the region, of course.
Hold on, also I think the commission has a couple of things to say.
Does anybody have any commentary?
Well. I've known Alex for years. I mean, way back, my, one of my nieces was a, several of my nieces have participated in the cheer squad. We're proud of y'all. This is uh, I know it takes a lot of dedication. Probably more than football, basketball, baseball than anything else, because you all do this all year around. So you know what? My hat's off to you. Fantastic job, girls. Fantastic job.
Anybody have any comments?
Congratulations to the team. And yes, I know it is a lot of hard work, a lot of dedication. You have to manage your time. You have to keep up with your grades and you have to keep physically fit and mentally fit. So congratulations to the team and I wish you the very best.
No, Wiley?
No. Um, no, I just want to say, um, congratulations. I know from experience because that little blonde monkey right there is my daughter. So she's, but it does take a lot of dedication. It's from getting up at, you know, six, six thirty in the morning, getting ready to go to schools, all day at school. Do homework in the afternoon and stay at the gym till eight, nine, ten o'clock sometimes. That's almost every day when it comes to your season, so. They do a lot. Like, I really applaud them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, um, moms and dads, of course, don't forget the dads. Uh, congratulations to the families, uh, these beautiful, beautiful young ladies. And I'm sure they don't know Rujo, right? And uh, we're so proud of you guys. It's very emotional to see you guys here. We're so excited for you and proud. You make us all very proud. This is a moment you will not forget. Every moment in, in your life means something. Don't forget this moment. Live in it and cherish it. This is your moment right now. Uh, going forward, you'll learn from this, your colleagues, how to work as a team. How to help each other out. Put the team forward, not yourself, right? Always. Leaders are made, but you guys have the genetic background, obviously the support from your parents. To become effective leaders. You guys have it. And I hope you never lose that. Always reach for the start. The limit is only what you set in front of you. You're truly the only ones writing your future. What you want to be, whether it's a teacher, a doctor, whatever you guys want to do in your life. This is the moment. If you ever had any doubts in your mind, can I do it? Of course you can do it. Look what you, look what you're doing now. So the sky's the limit. Don't ever let anybody get in your way. You write your own destiny and we're very proud of you guys. Congratulations. Yes.
Before y'all leave, get back this way. Commissioner go up, get a picture.
Didn't recognize the young man.
Oh, where? It's you.
Is he a man?
Where? Is he part of the team?
Yeah.
Udi? From to talk to the height.
Tallest in the back, guys.
We're about to stay back here, right?
Yeah.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Yeah, that's important. And it's just not cooking in there. Don't worry. Also.
They want a national.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll be out the fifty-eight.
Where's it going to be at?
There's our coordinator. There's our coordinator. He always coordinates.
They're cheerleaders. They know how to pose. They know where to stand.
Well, they can televise ESPN?
Probably, yeah. On the ESPN plus. And, and, and no, it's on uh, NFS or NFL.
Make sure you let us know what we're finding before you leave.
Okay. Were you thinking of a trip to Florida, right? You're so lucky you get to go so often. Lucky shit.
I thought soccer was expensive.
I have some mortgage for my child.
What, did you see the general manager job?
So I know I'm in the wrong business.
Give him three percent in a car.
All ready, guys? Where you're not going to get a picture?
And Amos?
Yeah. Yeah. Commissioner Laura.
What did you say?
Yeah, we're fine.
You call it this.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's why I say.
Yeah.
Commissioner. And you?
Yeah.
I'll be over here in the corner.
I'll be in the corner.
What are we doing? You need to do some more. Go cheer.
Three, two, one.
All right, here we go, three, two, one, three, two, one, three, two, one. I'll share with Karen and Abby.
I think we'll get a couple more here.
See, you share them and then send them to your board.
Congratulations, girl. Uh, Yedi. Yeah, big Yedi's for water, I was in the gym with her.
Yeah.
Thank you, congratulations again, girls.
Congratulations.
To adjourn.
Yep, that's all I got.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it passes, we are adjourned at 5:13, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.